The United States of America, into the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thank everyone here for being patient, and we'll try to go through everything we can in a timely manner and be efficient so we get you out of here. Board and committee reports, seeing none. Citizens' concerns, seeing none. The public hearing, what we're going to do with the public hearings today, tonight, is they're going to be continued, and we're going to take them separately. And Chuck Adaman, I'll entertain a motion to, on the Middle Street Public Hearing, to continue it to 9:23.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll then take a motion on the Main Street Public Hearing to move it to 10:28.
So moved.
Second.
Both will be at 7:30, Tracy?
Mm-hmm.
Both will be, good catch, both will be at 7:30. Any discussion?
What was the date on the middle?
Uh, 9:20, 10, yeah.
Thank you.
10, is it 10:28 or 9:28?
10:28.
10:28. 10:28 and the-
No, middle is 9:23.
Thank you.
Yep, middle is 9:23.
Main Street is 10:28.
10:28, right.
Okay.
All right, so, once again, to clear this up, the Middle Row will be on the ninth month, the 23rd day, at 7:30 in this room. And the Main Street will be 10:28 at 7:30 in this room. Did we vote on Main Street? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Town administrators' report?
Okay. I just wanted to note that our special town meeting is going to be on October 21st, and I'd like to request that the board sets the deadline for articles for the 22nd, so that you would be able to vote on them on the 23rd.
You want a motion?
Yes, please.
Motion, guys?
So moved.
Chuck?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Sorry, that's September 22nd, correct?
September 22nd.
September 22nd for the deadline, yep. We've received notification from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs of a grant award in the amount of $145,000. The award is part of the Green Infrastructure Grant Program and is going to be used to re-vegetate and restore portions of the dunes associated with storm impacts, as well as the public access pass within the coastal dunes of Newbury. The restoration will employ innovative approaches vetted in field trials with technical assistance from the University of New Hampshire. The efforts will be focused within the area of ongoing permitted beach restoration, and it's going to be from the Center Island groin north to the Newbury Port town line, so there's about 39 acres of dunes. And Doug Packer will be kind of our point person on this, and the activities will include students from UNH as well. It's all about promoting dune rebuilding for protection of property.
Tracy, before you go on, I'm kind of aware of this project intimately. Greg Moore and I work together quite a bit. This is going to be very creative and hopefully stimulate new ways and new approaches, and he's going to be pioneering some of this on Plum Island. And then, we were part of the team that won the Storm Resiliency Sandy Grant and the Storm Resiliency Grant, and he will be also doing a large planting of similar nature on Salisbury, so it's pretty exciting stuff.
The pumper replacement is progressing, or purchase, I should say, is progressing. We've secured the financing, and Town Council has approved the contract, so the truck is currently being built. I wanted to let you know we're having a hazardous waste collection day on November 15th from 9 to 12 at the Newbury Elementary School. The Board of Health is sponsoring that.
November what?
You also, I had distributed to you the Plum Island Traffic and Parking Study a number of weeks ago. I just wanted to give you an update on where we are with that. Doug Packer's working with DEP to get preliminary approvals for the implementation of Merrimack Valley Planning Committee Commission's recommendations, so that's going to be moving forward as we get more and more into the fall. We've advertised for the Assistant Treasurer Collector position and are currently interviewing candidates. Our hope is to have someone onboard the 1st of October. We've conducted about five interviews already and have a couple more planned, so that's the part-time position in the Treasurer Collector's office. We also, I've been working with the Human Resources Board. We've prepared the advertisement for the Shellfish Constable Position that was approved at the town meeting, so we'll get that advertisement out soon in hopes of getting someone on full time. Also wanted to let you know we have a newly installed lockbox at the bottom of the stairs that will accept payments after hours. We've had a couple of concerns sometimes that our hours aren't conducive for people getting in here, so we've added the lockbox, but payments won't be credited until obviously the next business day. The Veterans Services Department, just so you know, applications were due two weeks ago, and the Town of Ipswich HR Department is conducting all the interviews for that position, and they also hope to have a new agent in place the 1st of October. But we've been processing the payments, there haven't been any interruptions in services to our current veterans. And also, I just wanted to let you know, I did receive a note from Kenneth Sprague, who's the Deputy Chief of the MBTA Transit Police, and he was commending the Newbury Police Department for their cooperation and professionalism in responding to an incident that occurred in the town, but they couldn't say enough about, you know, the level of professionalism our first responders displayed, so just wanted to let you know that. That's all I have for now.
Okay, thank you very much, Tracy. We will move on to new business. John, are you ready? You might have to click the microphone when you go up to it. John asked to be put on the agenda. He's working with a local grassroots organization that is involved in awareness for sea level rise and other things, and he would just like to introduce himself.
Thank you, Jeff. I'm John Harwood. I live at 162 High Road in Newbury, and I represent Storm Surge, the Merrimack Valley Coastal Adaptation Work Group. My role in that group is to be a liaison to businesses, government officials, educational institutions, the general public, whoever might, we want to be in contact with regarding various programs that are going on about storm preparedness. My purpose in coming here tonight was really simply to introduce myself to the board. I regret that all the members aren't here, but I'll make sure to follow up and contact the two missing members individually. Following that, I'll be contacting various town officials, some of which I know, some of which I hadn't had the pleasure of talking with yet, including Tracy, so I'll look forward to that. The thought here is that while the Board of Selectmen is in the position they are in the town, the actual work about storm preparedness and concerns dealing with sea level rise will actually be done, just as has been mentioned here, by people like Doug Packer and the Conservation Commission and many other town officials. And I suspect that we're more likely that we'll be working directly with them most often, rather than the board themselves. Storm Surge was organized last year, and just a year ago this month was officially launched. They've run a number series of programs, bringing in noted scientists to educate us all about what we face with the climate crisis, and most recently, those programs were held at the Round School here right in Newbury. In addition to what was referred to here tonight and the grant that Tracy was talking about, there's also a major program involving over a million dollars in connection with planning to be done to prepare better for major storms in this area, and we expect Storm Surge to be involved in that in regard to community outreach, and of course, with the position that Newbury is in and the region, and Plum Island is certainly something that's going to involve many, I'm sure, town officials and members of the public right here in Newbury. That's really all I have to say tonight. I will leave you with some of my business cards that have my contact information on them, and I'm sure I urge any of you, if you have questions or you wonder something about something that's going on that has something to do with Storm Surge and preparation, that you'll feel free to contact me. I'm pretty easy to get in touch with. Not only do I live nearby here, but I'm a retired guy, and I don't even leave town all that often anymore. Thank you.
Thank you.
John, thank you very much. The next item on the new business is something that basically harkens back to our town meeting. I'm going to let Aunt, Pat Hockery from Fish and Wildlife-
Thank you, John.
Regional Director?
Northeast.
Northeast Regional Director, wow. And Anne Gagnon from Fish and Wildlife, Division of Fish and Wildlife. I'm here to discuss, and I'm going to let them kind of frame up, Anne, I'm going to let you frame up what occurred too, so that you flesh out the whole part of it, but it harkens back to town meeting, when we were thinking about a home rule petition, and it got tabled because of certain complications within the process itself, and maybe certain complications that could befall Fish and Wildlife because of the use of federal money. So whoever would like to go up to the microphone, would you give your name and speak, and then absolutely, but flesh out the whole thing if you can, Anne?
My best.
And if you want me to, I'll add stuff too.
Sure. For the record, my name is Anne Gagnon. I'm the Northeast-
Kind of look that way too, so people can hear you. You can do anything you want. Move it right out, good.
Very good.
Good.
I'm not standing with my back to you.
Good.
I'm the Northeast District Land Agent for Mass Division of Fisheries and Wildlife. And you may remember that, as Jeff Walker mentioned, back in May, the Boudros had come before the Selectmen and requested to be put on the warrant to have the Selectmen submit legislation that would transfer land where their house is located on Moody Street from the Department of Fish and Game to the Boudros. And the reason for that is because the federal government took a bunch of land back in, I think it was the 40s. They took too much. They took a whole bunch of land in a whole bunch of different towns. The court said you overstepped. You can keep Plum Island, basically Parker River National Wildlife Refuge, but the rest of the land you need to divest. So the different, I guess, the property owners had a certain number of years in which to request their land back, and anything that was left over at the end of this time period, the federal government sold to the State Department of Fish and Game. Well, when the federal government did that, when they sold this land to the state, they didn't record a taking on each individual parcel. Instead, they recorded a deed that said, "Everything that we took within these boundaries minus everything we had to give back." So consequently, a lot of landowners were a little unclear as to what was taken, what wasn't taken, et cetera. So, fast forward, I think a lot of people inherited their land from their relatives. They weren't sure exactly where it was. They turned around, sold it to someone else, who in turn, sold it to someone else. One of those third parties were the Boudros. So they built their house, raised their family, paid taxes, all these years, and come to find out they don't really own the land that the house is located on. There's no adverse possession on state and federal conservation land. So, what to do to resolve the situation? So I came up with this idea of looking to see if there was any town-owned land that wasn't already conservation land, that was intended to be conservation land. If it's already conservation land, then there's no value to it, basically. The development rights have already been sold, given away. So we, I came up with the back portion of the Central Street playing fields. It's my understanding that it has always been the intention, when that land was purchased for, I think, 1.5 million, or something to that extent, that the idea was that the front portion would be used for active playing fields, soccer and whatever, and then the rear portion was mostly brackish tidal marsh and wetlands and flood plain and the ACEC for the Great Marsh. And that portion was going to stay as passive recreation, and perhaps a boardwalk would be put in or something like that, but no development per se. So it appears that we could, the state could, Fish and Game could purchase a portion of that back property, not the fields themselves, the active playing fields would, you know, stay active playing fields, just the wooded part essentially, and the undeveloped part. If the town sold this to Fish and Game as a bargain sale, so what we would do is the state would pay for an appraisal themselves, and then a portion of that bargain sale could be used to offset the Boudro lot that we would give them, basically, so that they could keep their house. And in order to make it worthwhile for the town, for the citizens of Newbury, the state would pay $160,000 for this backland wetlands with a portion of frontage, so that it would appraise out. The whole idea is that it would have to appraise out. The town, the state can't purchase land for more than the appraised value. That's to prevent kind of sweetheart deals and, you know, gee, you should buy this land from my cousin, kind of situations. So that's the proposal. I think it would be, obviously, it would be a great thing for the Boudros, because, you know, they've been paying taxes all along. It would be nice to, you know, not have to, I think this would be the easiest way of fixing that unfortunate situation, and hopefully it would never occur again. It was kind of a strange circumstance. This would be a way for the town to get kind of a windfall of 160 grand that you wouldn't really have expected to get from this land, because you never intended to sell it, and it would still stay used for the same purpose that it currently is. You know, it would be left in its natural condition. Perhaps at some point, there'd be a path that would be made or something like that, but there's currently no proposal to do any, anything to the property. So I'm here before the Selectmen to see if they would be so kind as to allow us to put this on the fall warrant, so that the townspeople of Newbury could consider that proposal.
A little more backstory. I would definitely, I'm going to deflect to Tracy, because she's done a little homework in a second with Town Council, and she's got a few things that are going to take and condition it somewhat, but a little more of the backstory for those people that might have forgotten or not been at town meeting. The Boudros piece is like four and a half acres. The house could actually be cut off from those four acres and be freestanding on a sanctioned lot of 40,000 square feet. And what has been proposed has merit. I mean, we could talk about the figure, you know, we could talk about a few different things. Obviously, this has to go back to town meeting, because, unless someone correct me, Tracy, because we tabled at a town meeting, didn't we? So I think, Anne, it's going to go back to town meeting in some ways anyway. Wouldn't you look at it in that way?
No, no, I would say that this is a completely different proposal. It's up to the Selectmen, I think, and the town. I don't know what Town Council has to say about, you know, bringing up an article that's already been tabled. You can either let it lay, or bring it up. I think it's a separate issue.
It won't come back to town meeting in the form of the petition that you originally saw.
Right.
How it will come back is in the form of a disposition. So under 30B, we're going to be looking at disposing of town-owned property.
Anne, why don't you continue on what you and Town Council-
We, I did have an opportunity to speak briefly with Town Council about it this morning, just to understand how the procedure would work, and I think the component that we're missing before you would vote to move it forward to town meeting is the appraisal piece. We need to see what that would come in at on those, on that portion that we would be turning over to-
Now, do we need our own appraiser too?
It seems to me, and I'm not 100% sure, but I saw something in your, in the town's bylaws at one point in time that would require that the town get an appraisal. Do you recall that, Martha? Okay. It would probably be a good idea for both of us to get appraisals.
I think 30B requires that if the town disposes of land, then you have to have it appraised by, and the wording is something like, you know, "normal appraisal methods" or something to that effect. It's silent as to who pays for it. I know in the past, I have purchased land from the town of Dunstable, and they just used our appraisal. We paid for it, but we put both the town's name and our name on it, so that both parties could use the appraisal, rather than having to pay for another appraisal, but that's absolutely within your purview to decide to do your own.
Now, one question, because I hear an echo. Can you hear us down there? Are we projecting our voices now? Can you hear us? Not kicking the can down the road, because Anne has come and worked on this before, and the Boudros have a lawyer, and Dave Mountain and myself have looked at this, and you met with Martha and Doug, so it's not that we haven't proceeded forward in this, but now I'm a little concerned as to how this can be done quickly enough to get on this town meeting.
Is it reasonable to think you would have an appraisal done by 22nd, 23rd of the month?
I don't know if we could get a full-blown appraisal by then. We could certainly, well, let me rephrase that. The proposal has always been a bargain sale. I've never proposed that the, that Fish and Game would pay exactly what the land is worth, because, number one, it was never meant to be sold and developed, and, number two, the whole idea of doing this, quite frankly, is to resolve this Boudro issue. So it's always proposed, been proposed to be a bargain sale. It's my understanding under 30B that the town can choose to do that. If they do, they just have to explain why. They have to have a little explanation that is published in the central register. So this exact thing happened with the town of Dunstable. They had a piece of land that they bought for general municipal purposes for a couple different reasons. They thought maybe they would use it for a town garage. It was next to the dump. They were a little nervous that maybe someone would build a house with a well, and there might be issues, so that's why they had originally purchased it. It happened to be next to conservation land that Fish and Wildlife owned. We ended up buying it at a bargain sale for much less than the town had paid for it, and the idea was, well, we already put up a garage somewhere else that was more appropriate. We really still don't want somebody to build a house with a well to deal with the dump issue, and so it would, it's to the town's benefit to sell it and, even at a reduced cost, get some money recouped and still have it in conservation, which is kind of where it is now. And that worked out fine. So there is that possibility. In terms of getting the appraisal done before town meeting, I would say that because it's a bargain sale, I don't know, I mean, you could, I would definitely urge you to check with Town Council, but it seems to me that you could put an article, it would be legal to put an article saying, you know, approximately X amount of acres for $160,000, and subject to appraisal, or something like that, to make sure, because we can't pay more than appraised value. I'm sure it's going to appraise out for more than that because of this bargain sale issue, and that would give us time to get that, to get that appraisal done and make sure that we, we would also, the state would also have to pay for a survey. And currently, that land is registered land, so those kinds of surveys tend to be incredibly costly. What we would suggest is that we take that parcel out of registered land. That's a relatively easy process if, that we've done before for conservation reasons. The exact same thing, there was one piece, we wanted to buy a portion of it, took it out of registered land, did a regular, normal survey instead of the registered land survey, saved the state a lot of money, and, you know, proceeded that way.
Anne, I've got a couple of questions, and then I'm going to do something a little different. My first question, and maybe I'll make it just one question. Where did the word bargain sale come from? Is that something that holds, you know, some weight in selling of land? Is it a word that you just coined for this?
No, I didn't coin it. It's a common term.
Okay.
Yep, and a bargain sale just means less than the appraised value. So for instance, I'm assuming that the land that Fish and Wildlife would be purchasing would be more than $160,000, and the reason I say that is because the whole purpose of the proposal of the purchase is to offset this Boudro lot, and so I purposely, purposefully picked a lower figure than I think-
Now, just for the sake of good spirit, I'm going to have a little bit of a litmus test here today, or tonight. For myself and my board, and maybe for Anne, I'm going to ask if there is any questions that the audience might have, or any suggestions, or are you confused about the process? State your name and go, please, to the microphone.
Dale Williams, Skollin Heights Drive. Just curious if there's any other properties in town where somebody's going to come out of the woods and say, "Hey, you did this for the Boudros. I think I have an issue too," and is this the kind of thing that could be a domino effect?
I don't think we're probably going to be able to answer some of these questions, but it's going to be good for us to have a little bit of an idea of what we might be up against at town meeting, so I don't know if you have an answer to that, Anne? I don't.
I think that's an excellent question, and, you know, for good reason. And we recent, one of the reasons that we found out about this Boudro issue is not just because they came to the Selectmen in May, but also because we've spent the last, I don't know how many years, hiring a title examiner to painstakingly go through all those federal takings to see what was taken originally back in the 40s, what was given back, what actually came to Fish and Game, where the boundaries were, et cetera. And as far as I know, is this the only one in Newbury? And as far as I know, is this the only one in Newbury? Is there some other parcel that I'm forgetting?
Yeah, there's one. But it's not a house.
But it's not a house, it's a minor transgression, as opposed to, you know, the Boudreau issue, which is, you know, not easily fixed.
Can you go up a list to the microphone, please?
Courtney Drive. Was there, having, in the history of the sale of the home, was there ever any title insurance purchased for this, ever?
No.
No, that would've been an easy out.
Yeah, that's an excellent question, too. Would've been nice.
So, that being said, Damon, discussion for the board.
A few times in your discussion, you mentioned the state purchasing it. Is that, when you say the state, do you mean the Fish and Wildlife through the state will be purchasing?
Exactly, the Mass, Mass Department of Fish and Game, so it would be article, considered Article ninety-seven land, so, you know, never, never to be built on or sold for other purposes.
I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I should've, I should've been more clear on that.
Now, if we don't vote tonight, we close, the warrant will be closed on the twenty-second, right?
Well, we asked that everyone submit their articles by the twenty-second, and you could take them up on the twenty-third.
Oh, so we could take them up on the twenty-third?
Your meaning?
I mean, I'm gonna ask my board what they'd like to do. I'd, I'd almost like to have my full board here to be able to kind of assimilate some of the information, too, whether, where we have the ability. Mike and Dave can maybe watch this on TV. And then part of me says putting it on the warrant seems rather benign, I mean, because it's gonna be town meeting that makes the decision anyway. And if you think you're prepared, and the default would be, would it be going to the legislature with a home rule petition?
Well, I think it has to come to the, it has to come before town meeting in order to submit, you know, home rule petition. So, I would request that, you know, if, if you could see your way clear to putting it on, then we'll do our best to get all our ducks lined up.
Yep.
I, I also feel that the Boudreaux's have been pretty patient in, you know, waiting for May, and, you know, it'd be nice to try to solve it sooner rather than later. It's still gonna take a lengthy process.
Yep.
Because not only, even if town meeting votes to do this, and, you know, the, the town gets the money, et cetera, before we can actually exchange the land, et cetera, we also have to go and submit our own legislation. And maybe we can actually word the warrant article that would, that would allow the selectmen and the town of Newbury to include that same legislation that would allow the state, Fish and Game, to sell, or to, to gift, basically, the Boudreau to, you know, forty thousand square foot lot to the town, for the town to then turn around and, you know, give, give to the Boudreaux's as compensation. See, the, the thing is that we can't, because it's Article ninety-seven land, the Department of Fish and Game can't just decide we wanna give this land away, you know, that's, they purposefully make it very difficult for us to get rid of conservation land, and I'm, for one, glad that that's the case, because, you know, it's very, very hard for people who wanna develop our, our land to-
Anne, Anne's done a very nice job presenting this, and I have spoke with the director, and part of the issues that exist in this is there could be complications with the way the land was purchased. It was purchased with federal money, and it's pretty hard to divest federal money, so it could have complications for the budget for Fish and Wildlife going forward. So, it's, it's not a simple issue, so I'm gonna ask for the will of the board and a motion, and, and we'll go forward with that. Any, what have I got?
My feeling is that it should go before town meeting, as long as we don't have the issue with the appraisal. There's no legal reason we shouldn't bring it before town meeting, I'm comfortable with it being there.
How about you, Judge?
Same.
Then someone make a motion in a second.
Motion to put it on the town warrant.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Anne.
Thank you very much, we, we really appreciate it. Hope we can work it out to everyone's satisfaction.
Have your best voices on that night when you, for the presentation.
Yeah, I have this.
Thanks again.
Third, third item on the, under new business, and it just, it just dawned on me before I take that, too. I would like to acknowledge the loss of Peter Murphy. He was on the Board of Assessors with us, and he's an integral part of the town and a great person, so, and he, and he passed last week, so I'd like to take and acknowledge that. That being said, we have before us a fuel training proposal for a half marathon event, and as I looked at this, I thought it was pretty well-done. They have John Lucy's, if you guys take a peek in that, I mean, they worked with it last year, it's gone through the, is anyone here to represent this? Come on up, if you would, please. Yeah, right, yeah, you can be a star at the microphone, name and-
Hi.
Hawaii.
Chief of Police at Newbury Port.
Yeah, and you, you folks ran this last year, if I, if I understand, and it was successful, and, and we have a letter from John, so I'll take a motion, our discussion from the board, we'll, we'll take a motion and then we'll discuss.
She wanna say anything first?
Huh?
I thought she was gonna present something.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, no, I mean, I think you have all the information.
Yep.
That it would be held on May thirty-first, Sunday, in the morning.
Yep.
And starts at the Toll Building in Newbury Port, and comes through your town, and ends up at the Toll Building in Newbury Port.
So, motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any more discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, you got it.
Greg, we have a request from the Beach Coma for amped music Sunday, October fourth, two thousand fourteen, from six to ten P.M. for a function for Newbury Port's class reunion of nineteen eighty-four. So, any more you wanna add to it, or just go, go ahead, you sure can.
Hi, I'm Kathy Pew, co-owner of the Beach Coma. I apologize for reading my statement, it's, it's been a pretty emotional time trying to get all of this taken care of, so before I get emotional or upset, I'm gonna just read it, 'cause I'll just be counterproductive. So, we feel like we've been on the defense the last few months, you know, we're just trying to do what we think is best for the success of our business, both for our family and for all the families, almost thirty employees that we employ. You know, before going on, I'd like to remind the board that the Beach Coma has been a good friend to many local organizations and the town itself. We've done many fundraises, police was to save Bennett Hill, we've raised money for the Greenhead Traps, we participated in many local fundraises, including the Anna Jakes' Great Chefs Night, Taste of Plum Island, the Newbury Bonfire. We also provided food for the prisoners when they worked here on Town Hall. You know, Greg has spoken to the chief of police, who had voiced no concern about how we're conducting our business. We've never had any trouble or fights or anything, you know, when we've had our music, and, you know, we've always turned down the music or been accommodating whenever we can. You know, he mentioned that he would have accessibility to the decibel reader, where I believe Sam Jawsen said the acceptable decibel level is fifty-five to sixty-five. So, I mean, that's something that, you know, we still have not, has not come true. I mean, the old Beach Coma has been there since the fifties, and it's always been a much rowdier place than it is now. I mean, it's, it had music, you know, many nights. I mean, I have a, a newspaper here that hangs on our wall, that was nineteen eighty-eight, that they had music Friday and Saturday nights from nine P.M. until one A.M. every Friday and Saturday night. And that's when it was like a biker bar, it was a, was a biker bar, and that was the latest last call. People used to rush to Plum Island to go for last call. You know, we're not that anymore. We close at eleven-thirty for last call, where we could've stayed open later, but we knew we were in a residential area. We're, you know, we're parents, we have young kids, we don't wanna be there that late. So, I mean, we've really tried to work with the neighbors to do what we can to, you know, be supportive. You know, so we'd like to work with the selectmen and the town officials and, and the neighbors that have concerns. We wanna do whatever it takes to make this a good situation for all of us. You know, we've attained the crowd control, the, and willing to hire a doorman, you know, we, we don't wanna have to lose any more business, you know, it's, we're just trying to make a buck, especially living on Plum Island in the wintertime. We need a reason for people to come over the bridge to Plum Island. I mean, there's a lot of residents that live out there year-round, but we need, we need people from the town of Newbury and Newbury Port to come over the bridge to, you know, help us get through. I mean, the, the statement that was written in the paper yesterday, you know, that Michael Bulgares last time said, you know, with having the music would make, encourage people to linger and, and drink, which is a recipe for disaster. I mean, it's a, the times that we have, you know, the four to seven on Sundays, you know, that's a very family-friendly time. I mean, there's kids in there that are up dancing, you know, people coming and having dinner during that time. I mean, it's, and there's lots of other places in town and, and Newbury Port and those that, that have that same situation, too. And like I say, we have never been a rowdy establishment, so, thank you.
Thank you. Before we proceed, and, and I'll let you speak, I'm noted for letting people speak, I would like to try to draw some clarification. You do have the ability to have some entertainment on Sundays right now, and you have a pending request for some sadties, and it will be and has been for unamped music at this point. However, I'd like to read what I have in front of me, because it could be a little confusing, and I understand what you were saying, but the request before us tonight is a little different than the entertainment on Sundays. The request that we have was for the Plum Island Beach Coma to have amped music on a day, which would be October fourth, from six to ten P.M., and that's what we have to look at right now before us. So, now, my only confusion is, and Sam had written a letter, Sam, yep, Sam's here, and, Sam, I could read this letter, but it's probably not gonna illuminate some of the issues that we have in front of us. And do me a favor, when you speak tonight, I wanna know where the unamplified music is in place and that can stay. Is it possible to have one event with amplified music if all those things are lawful, or is that gonna be something that's addressed with this letter that I read? Because, all right, thanks.
I spoke with Greg earlier this week, we started talking about it. At some point, there was some possible, I guess, a tongue-in-cheek kind of sign written down at the Beach Coma that a lot of people thought was serious. I got a number of calls, talked with Greg a little bit about that. We, we have two issues down there. One is a sound issue, which is strictly selectmen. As far as the, the sound levels, Kathy was saying that I, I spoke about, I did a little bit of looking, just to see what other towns have for ordinances. And that fifty-five to sixty-five range was kind of that, the common ground for outside of the business, most of them use it as a hundred or fifty, fifty to a hundred feet. So, that, that's, that's in your hands. The other issue that we have is state building code. Excuse me. When, looking at this originally, I know the intent of the Beach Coma, their intent is, is, you know, again, that family-friendly restaurant, and that's why we've been, been trying to work with them. With the concern of neighbors over the sign, they asked me to look back into, they started getting into the building code, asked me some questions, so I contacted the, our district's state inspector, John Bennett. John informed me, because of the way the regulations are written, because it's an establishment that has food, it has alcohol, once you add entertainment, it changes your classification from an A-two, which is your restaurant, to an A-two N.C., which is a nightclub type of classification. They don't, and I guess it's a, a shortcoming in the building code, where it doesn't talk about how many nights, how long it goes, what type of entertainment, it's just if you add entertainment into that environment, you get into this new classification. With the new classification, it's considered a new structure with new, or new use, I should say. With the new use, at fifty persons or greater, requires sprinkling. They don't wanna sprinkle. I don't blame them, it's expensive. So, their options to get beyond the building code are either sprinkle, which, again, expensive, or appeal to the Board of Building Regulations and Standards, to, to go to them and say, "Look, we're not your, you know, eight o'clock till one A.M. bar-type situation where we have weekend concerts, things like that. We've got local entertainers coming in on a Sunday afternoon." That gets them beyond the building code issue, makes it real easy for me. Without that, my, my position has to be, because of what the code says, what the state inspector said, is that once you add entertainment, it brings it to that nightclub status. Now, as far as one-day events, I asked them about that as well, and what you need to look at is why would that one day be any different than any other day approval, and how do you make it different? And things that they've done, like crowd control manager is a course for that. Other thing, you may wanna check with both police and fire chiefs to see if they feel there's any additional protections needed for whatever type of event there is during, whatever, you know, the, you know, class reunion or whatever, and, and the hours that are there, and whatever's going on. But there should be something, from a liability standpoint on the town side, there should be some, some other measures in place, unless that's sprinkled. Once it's sprinkled, that, that goes away, but again, that being costly, their, their least expensive route is to go to the Board of Building Regulations and Standards, ask for relief from chap, I outlined it in the letter, chapter's nine, and one that would give them that relief they're looking for, so that I can step away, leave it in your hands as far as sound goes, then it's you, police chief for enforcement, and go from there.
Thank, thank you very much, Sam. I mean, Sam, you're our code enforcement person, so, I mean, and you've certainly done his work. Greg, have you made, Sam, thanks. Greg, have you made inroads into following the procedure that Sam outlined in, in seeking relief from the state?
I just got the letter today.
You just got the letter today, we just spoke yesterday, so-
Okay.
You haven't acted yet?
All right.
It's not that fast.
And I apologize for the writing of the, of the sign, that was kind of a, it's, this is hard not to be emotional and hard not to be, I apologize for the writing of the sign.
Sam, if, if, if Greg gets moving, do things like this, you probably have never really been involved in something like, you know, going to, for seeking relief from these entities, do they seemingly take forever?
No, it's like any other board committee, it depends on when you hit them, as far as their meeting goes. If you hit it right, it, it comes up quickly, if not, it takes a little bit of time. You know, I, I told Greg I'd even be willing to go down with them and, and, you know, explain the, the structure of the building, the way it's being used to the B.B.I.R.S. You know, I have to remain impartial, but I can give my, my perception of the building and say, you know, this is what I see, this is how it's used, this is what the neighbors perceive it as, and let, let him have at it. But again, you know, like anything else with, with state and local, it's process, and it will probably take a little bit to get through.
So, if I understand you correctly, we could grant the one-day license because it is unlike other days at that point, but the, the ongoing license that we previously approved is no longer valid?
You can issue one-day licenses as long as you take appropriate precautions, because there's no limit under the state for number of entertainment licenses you can issue, so what's to say the selectmen couldn't issue three sixty-five for an entertainment license? What you have to do for the town sake, from a liability standpoint, to give relief from the code, is show what makes that day different. Why is the building more safe? We don't have sprinklers, but we're gonna allow an event that would require sprinklers, how do we, how do we compensate for that? Again, you know, things like the crowd control manager, they've gone through the training already, you talk to, you know, have a, like you said, a, a door person, I think, well, the crowd control covers that counting occupant load, so you don't overload the capacity- crowd control covers that counting occupant load, so you don't overload the capacity. Make sure, you know, touching base with the fire chief, let them know that, you know, this event's going on. You know, depending on the type of event, if they feel it's going to be dangerous, then they want to detail. Same thing with police, like any other event that we have anywhere else in town. Once they determine what this is, you know, and I don't see down there, it's not like they're going to have, I would assume they wouldn't have like a heavy metal band and they're doing stage diving. You know?
Not anymore.
No. So, you know, it's gauging your, what type of patrons you're going to attract, you know, class of 84 unless they're a really wild class. An 84er is here. So, you know, that's the type of thing they want to find out, is what this event is going to be, what do we feel are the appropriate safeguards? We document them and move them on. So, yeah, the Board of Selectmen can approve these one-day events, but they should do so with caution, with provisions for your public safety employees to put some guidelines in place for that event. And then the remainder of it, the longer term, we can go through the BBRS process, hopefully get that waiver that says you're good to go, and then you guys can just deal with the sound issue.
So, on the, on the back of what Damon said, crowd control manager is in place, fire chiefs and police would have to be alerted. The third component that I kind of gleaned from what you said was that the liability for the town was somewhat taken into, now, how, what does that actually mean? Does Greg carry insurance? I mean, where do we go from?
But it's, it comes down to, again, if we allow something that the building code doesn't, so we allow and we say, "Go ahead, have entertainment down there," building code says, "No, you got to sprinkler it," and we just say, "Go ahead and do it." We're going to hold some liability there if there's some sort of accident, and we want to limit that liability, not necessarily through Greg's insurance, but dealing with myself, police chief, fire chief, as the officials under the Department of Public Safety to say, "Okay, we feel if you do steps A, B, and C, it's equivalent to that sprinkler system for that one event. Next event, come back to us and we'll assess that, see what steps we need for each of those individual events." So, again, you know, this is commonplace, it happens across the state, but to just say, "Yeah, go ahead," and have no change, no provision in place, really exposes us, I think, pretty greatly to just ignore a piece of code and regulation, just because it's a one-day thing versus many. So, as long as we take those precautions and are thoughtful about our approval, I think we can.
So, one more question, and then I'm going to kind of be quiet and deflect my board, but, so this is almost premature right now because the fire and police, we don't have a recommendation from those folks?
Depends how you want to handle it. If you want to approve with the approvals from them, with appropriate safeguards, that may be a way to do it, or continue, you know, that's at your discretion, but.
What do you think, guys?
Chuck? What's that?
Yeah, I would like to see it move forward, and if the way to move it forward is to ask for fire and police to be informed and give a written response with their approval, contingent on the license, I think that would satisfy the law, and then we'd have in writing what the safety requirements for this special event are, which I think meets the requirements thereby protecting the town.
And for this, not just for this procedure, this is something, right now, because of this and other, other local events that have been going on, myself, town clerk's office, and Tracy have been working on a, I guess, a application guideline so that any, any application or permissions asked of selectmen, whether it be for one-day liquor, one-day entertainment, use of the green, that we have a form that outlines which, which members of the town should be taking a quick look at that and just saying, "Hey, you know, did you think of this?" Stuff like, we had an event, I forget what it was recently, where someone came in, wanted, I want to say it was either lower green or upper green or Manta Field, one of them, and we just found out that they're going to have tents that, again, building code comes into play. It's easy to get by, it's easy to permit, it's, everything's easy to do, but they weren't aware. And again, allowing these things to happen with the town permission and not having a full understanding of what we're giving permission for, I think, is setting us up for some, some issues. So, we're trying to streamline the process, get it so that you come in, you know, whoever's applying can come in with a piece of paper that says, "I've done my due diligence, I've got the okay from all these guys, if I do these things," or just doing nothing, I just move forward, we can put it in front of you, and it makes your job a whole lot easier and makes the applicant's job a whole lot easier, so they're not bouncing back and forth, trying to figure out who they need to appease, you know. I think that's kind of unfair to keep bringing people back and back because of our sort of haphazard process. You know, we do the best we can, but we're, I think we're getting a little more streamlined, and I think that'll help.
Chuck, anything?
Quick question, what is the band that is scheduled for October 4th?
Who are they?
Yeah.
The name of them?
Yeah.
Still.
Is that the one that we had the issue with, with the loudness the neighbors were complaining about, the same band?
I don't know. What I don't, what the question is, I don't, we had any complaints, there was, I don't, I don't know if, it was back in February, March?
March, February were the complaints.
Yeah.
If that was it, do you have in front of you what the complaint was, sir?
Probably not.
You have the piece of safeguard data, I don't know what you're, what you're going by.
So, I think the question before my board, and I'll ask the board for clarification on what they'd like to do, is maybe to ask Greg to go ahead and accomplish all the things that basically Sam had said under this one-time event, which crowd control is in place. Minimizing of liability is what seems to be primordial, and it would be fire chief and police probably beyond that. You can either take and ask him to come in by tabling it next time with all those things in place, or we can maybe, and it's totally up to you guys, you, with the motion, we can decide whether to approve a contingent upon those things. So, discussion and then a motion. Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Catherine Gabriel, and with the event, it's the class of 1984, and it's our 30th class reunion. The band is also members of our class, and I'm asking that you make a decision on this tonight rather than hold it, you know, put it forth to the next meeting, because we chose the Beach Coma because it's a local establishment, it has a really good reputation. We put out a save the date well over six months ago, we have people flying in. We're in a little bit of a jam at this point, given the recent events, and I will tell you that being a 30th reunion, we're all pushing 50 at this point, we're not as rowdy as we used to be. So, I'd like you to consider allowing us to have our event and to have our, our class band on October 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to maybe answer that just very quickly. A motion understood and preparation hitting us at this time, we could respond to you, and either the fire chief or police could say no.
I understand that.
So, but anyway, Michael, did you want to speak?
Mike Doyle, this is Morgan Ave, I have a question for the board. Since I've followed Greg's procedure for the last six months, every time he's coming forward, why does this board not make, like the fireman's hall do these things when they have class reunions? Do they have, they don't, they have amped music, they don't have to jump through hoops. They have liquor licenses, they don't have to jump through hoops. He's asking the four o'clock sometimes. I just don't understand, the coffee shop in Byfield, they have amped music, do they make these people jump through hoops? No. He's a local business, he's a taxpayer, he's done, he's done a lot for the community. I just don't understand where the board's coming from all these questions.
To answer very quickly, and Sam, I think, can answer it more explicitly, I understand that totally, but there is a difference between the fireman's hall and a restaurant.
Right, but still, amped music is amped music.
No, a restaurant and a fire hall are different. Sam, do you want to answer that more explicitly? If we could, Mike, it would be easy, trust me.
The issue here is the sprinkling versus not, and permissions through the BBRS or not. With use categories, a restaurant, again, is an A2, with entertainment, it goes to an A2NC. A fire hall that doesn't serve food and alcohol, or even if they have alcohol, it doesn't fall under that definition of nightclub, so from a building code standpoint, it doesn't fall in the same classification. From noise standpoint, is noise irritating anywhere in town? Sure, but I don't enforce that part.
But so, they have food and alcohol at those events in the fire hall?
But they are not classified as a restaurant under the state building code. So, it makes a difference in how they're classified once you put entertainment in them, because they typically have a different primary function, and again, for those one-night events, and this is why we want to have these forms in place coming up, is so that if they have the one-night events, they still should be looking at fire safety. And now, granted, they're a fire hall, but that doesn't exempt them from, you know, the firemen aren't sleeping there and waiting, I mean, they're, they're gone for the day, they open the hall up, it's, unless someone in there knows how to run the fire truck, they're no different. So, we need to get the same permissions from fire chief, police.
So, that's your recommendation to the board for that as well? Because I don't know that that's been happening.
Right, from a code standpoint, it's easier to get around. We don't need to go to the BBRS because it doesn't change their use classification to a nightclub.
But in terms of town liability?
But in terms of town liability and public safety, we should follow the same procedures for anything that we approve, and that's why myself, Tracy, and town clerk are moving towards having something so we have some consistency. Again, the noise issue, earplugs are cheap, but until then, it's up to these guys.
And, you know, what Sam has said, Greg, is, you know, as we have become more sophisticated because of the issues, everyone will be now undergoing the same things that you're asked to undergo right now, too. So, it's not like you're being singled out now. I mean, if the fire hall are, they're going to have to take and, you know, have fire chiefs and police, the only thing that sets you aside is what Sam said with the classification of restaurant. So, now, it puts us in a, I'm going to go back to the board again, but it puts us in a tough position because the selectmen basically don't want to break the codes. So, we're trying to work as much as we can to be sympathetic to one of the businesses in town, trust me. So, where does my board stand on what they would like to do?
I myself will go along with this one day, seeing as it's been scheduled long, long in advance, we know the folks. All the rest will have to meet under that, under the code. So, I will make a motion for this one October 4th with fire and police permission.
I second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Got it, good.
So, could you just clarify, I'm sorry, what is that?
I don't know if I can.
What does that mean in terms, do they now not, no longer have the ability to have unamped music?
You know what? I was hoping you wouldn't ask that.
Yep.
Wasn't on the agenda.
Sam, where do we stand on that?
Your understanding correctly, that right now, because of that interpretation through the state, the permissions for the unam, you know, we overstepped our authority until it gets approval through the BBRS.
So, the next step for them is to go before the BBRS, they want that?
Yep.
And Greg, Sam said he'd go with you, so it's really time to get this.
So, Sundays are off the table now.
It's time to get, it's time to go and seek relief and get it done.
Okay, so, let me ask the board a question, if I sprinkle, I know, I'm just asking a question.
Go ahead.
If I sprinkle, and I do all the things that you're asking me to do, would you grant me an entertainment license?
Sam is going to have to very quickly, and I think it would, you know, illuminate a lot of things for everyone in here, I don't think it's as easily said as that, but it's probably not off the charts. Sam, what do they have to go through? Is it public hearings and every-guy's-done thing, or what's going on?
Sprinkling's pretty easy. That would make them compliant with the state building code, so the last issue would be noise, and whether or not, you know, where you guys want to stand on what's an acceptable noise limit for the Beach Coma. But if they sprinkle, building code is out of it. They're, they're good to go, their occupant load is under what's allowable with a sprinkled facility. So, at that point, they can be reclassified by me as, you know, by the building department as an A2NC, they'd have, you know, essentially, they would be reclassified as a nightclub, whether or not they want to call themselves that or not, that's what they'd be called under the building code, and then it comes down to the entertainment license, and I think the issue there that the board has is the noise complaints and how to address those.
All right, so Greg, regroup, decide what you want to do, and obviously, before you sprinkled, I tried to make sure you came back to this board for clarification on noise.
Decibel reader outside and, you know, the, what is acceptable, you would have to come down for yourself to figure out what is acceptable.
I mean, it's going to be a process, it would be a process with everyone, and like Sam just said, I can't speak for the board, but you would want to cross all your Ts and dot your Is before you just went and sprinkled, because I think that was your question, I think Sam was pretty specific in how he answered that.
If I go down with him to the, to the board, I have to go to the, we have to go into Boston, sit in front of the board, the board's going to say yes or no. If they say, "My request is open, not denied," but they approve it.
It's valid question.
Then I come back again, and then I'll be in the same, same situation again, I'll be asking for Sundays.
Which if I, Sam, if he gets relief, we're fine, right?
Well, fine as far as building code.
Code goes, yes.
It's very simplistic how you want to handle it, what appropriate decibel level is.
First steps first.
And I would say, I would say one of the things you probably want to do, maybe put someone on, starting to do a little bit of research into, you know, again, like I started looking at what other towns do, and, you know, again, it's going to be up to the five selectmen to figure out what's an acceptable level, and I'll go from there, but, yeah, that, again, will help you on the noise thing. You know, see, this is when we need David back.
Yep. Yeah, so maybe at the next meeting, we should have a discussion about what we think an acceptable decibel level is, 100 feet from a building?
And not only for the Beach Coma, but we have this around town. Right now, our noise ordinance is extremely vague. It says that you have to keep the noise level essentially reasonable. You know, I don't know what that means, how loud that is, how early, because I get the complaints contractors starting on a Saturday morning at 7:00. Is it reasonable? As a contractor, I say, "Yeah, you know, go for it." As the person that's got to the Saturday off and wants to sleep in, he doesn't think it's so reasonable. So, you know, I know Chief deals with this all the time, trying to get in the middle of noise complaints. You know, we have a lot of sections of town, not only Plum Island, that are very close, right behind us here.
Well, I was going to say, one of my questions is, is that I've heard 150 feet from the building, what is the decibel level? Well, cheapest creep is we get houses closer than that, so we really got to look at this.
Some lots on 150 feet across down on Plum Island, so, I mean, it's, they're 50 feet. So, and that's where we get to do a little bit of work, trying to figure out what, what we can do with our noise ordinance so that it's not kind of a guess what I'm thinking.
Yes.
I'll tell you, though, as this goes forward, I'd like to go on record right now, I think that some of the issues that we're speaking, but if a person can't mow their lawn in the morning, I think we're, we're getting out of line. So, you know, we, yep, yep. All right, microphone.
I'm Tara McQuaid.
I'm Tara McQuaid. I'm a Newbury resident, and I'm also representing with Kathy, the class of 80, NHS class of 84. And I guess, as I'm listening to this, I'm just wondering, I feel, I wonder if it's possible to grant the one-day request and keep things the way they are for the owners of the Beach Comer, because I don't think it's fair for them to have to give up the Sunday entertainment in order to accommodate our request. Is that what's happening?
Not really, no. Don't worry about it, you're okay.
Was approved through January, but you're saying that now we can't even do that, and all of the things from January?
I mean, go ahead, Sam.
With the sign and the attention that was brought to the Beach Comer, and me bringing in the state inspector to just clarify, what do we do in the situation? He did let me know that basically, the approval through selectmen is only part of the problem, or part of the, you know, approval process. But having the entertainment down there puts you into that other classification, so it's really not a valid approval, without going through the state and getting that approval. Even, yeah, because the way the code reads is live entertainment. So once you have live entertainment, it puts you into that category. So that sign really kind of fubard that.
All right, well, thanks, Sam. Greg, let's, one more, this is it. This is it.
My name is Jason Novak. I am the gentleman that hosts and emcees and promotes and conducts the four-to-seven afternoon. This, this evening, this early, early start and this early end, has been nothing but an awesome thing for the Beach Coma. This allows the community, the music lovers, to get together for a few hours in the early eve, to share stories, songs, converse, to converse and be with the awesome staff of the Beach Coma, enjoy their food and drink. There is nothing here that denotes or denotes debauchery in one way or another. I promise you. I've worked for 25 years in New York City and performed for thousands of people at a time. I know what it's like to be in said nightclub. This is very far from it. It's an acoustic coffeehouse type of thing. And what I am asking also myself, and I know that we've been granted the acoustic situation, which I appreciate, and for the last number of weeks, we've done it, and it's been very successful. What would create, what would be a boon to us, is simply what we have in front of us right now. These microphones, these, this small PA system, a personal address system, which does not create a booming sound for an establishment. I know that, realizing code and everything, so I don't have all my ducks in a row about that, so I'm not going to go, and I know that has to be figured out. But this is just shedding a little bit of light. For example, last Sunday, when I was there, there was a young gentleman, his name was Grant, he was six years old, and he was diagnosed with failure to thrive. I know it's kind of a nebulous, strange medical situation, but I do know that possible, you know, the possible things around that, becoming disinterested in the surroundings, avoiding eye contact, becoming irritable. Now, he was a little irritable at one point, but I'm a professional harmonica player. And when I started playing that harmonica, that gentleman was like a doe in headlights. And for five minutes, he was right there with this smile on your face that you would not even believe. So the word failure in his condition was out of the question. And along with him, his sister, his mother, and, if I may quite quickly, this is the professional poster that I put up every week. These are pictures right here of, this one's a little dark, we have children right here. You can see clearly the family and the family situation that's going on here, clearly. Another quick example, I'll get done. A gentleman in his late 50s came last Sunday, and I allowed him to get up to play some music for us. And he took hold of the, captivated the audience. Now, this is without amplification, and it's not that big of a room. And I certainly know how to work these things, to make these things just under any kind of code. I can guarantee, and I've stepped outside several times, and I've walked across the street and heard nothing. We don't need booming basses and big amplification, we don't need big drum kits, this is for sure. This man got up, 50 years old, he, you know, he did his thing, he came over to me, he's like, Jason, I got to tell you, I haven't done this for 30 years. This just made my whole year. This is what goes on. And I strongly encourage anybody, selectmen, please, I know Damon's been there, I've worked with Damon for a number of years, I've directed him shows, I've worked at the firehouse, the tannery and such. If you come down and experience an afternoon, you will understand. I guarantee it.
Now.
This is a family event for all ages.
Let me, let me, let me, we do know that, we are going to have to proceed with our meeting. It's not right now whether it's unamped or not unamped. Sam, let Sam get to the microphone again. Sam, I mean, I don't know if it's a question for town council or what, but with our exposure because of what occurred, what, and we, the selectmen are going to deflect, without putting Sam on the spot, we're going to deflect to what our building inspector tells us. So what do you think our exposure is on the Sunday entertainment? I know it puts you on the spot, but.
At this point, once we've had the state involved, had a state inspector down to ignore the building code, would be huge.
Yeah, okay.
You know, so really, the relief they're seeking has got to be through, through the BBRS, which, again, which, you know, if, if it's this Sunday afternoon, family type of thing, you know, I think it's something that, although doesn't meet the language of the code, probably meets the intent. But unfortunately, it just says, if you have a restaurant that serves alcohol and add live entertainment, you get put in this classification, and that triggers.
So does this mean that we, I know, we no longer can do four-to-seven unamplified at the Beach Coma?
Can I ask a question? Jennifer Blanchet, Four Island Lane. I am, I live down the street from the Beach Coma. I actually, I came tonight to speak in favor of the Beach Coma and everything they've done for the community, but we've all, we've been there. My question right now is in reference to where we are with this unamplified music. How is the unamplified music different than my daughter's getting up and singing?
You're not a restaurant?
No, at the restaurant.
And this happened several, this happened several times.
We can't get permission.
No, I understand that, but, but do you have, how come this band, or whoever they've invited to come, can't come to the restaurant and simply get up and sing?
That's kind of a silly example.
Well, no, but it's, but I'm at, I'm at, it's not in practice. It may seem silly, but it truly is the community and, in effect, what is happening. This is not a club, this is, this is not a concert. This is a group of people coming together, enjoying one another's company, yes, it happens to be in a restaurant. And, and that is my point, I am not trying to make light of this. I, as you know, I fully support abiding by the code. I just think that there is probably a way that we can figure this out, to allow, at this point, I'm not talking about the amplified music, that can be another discussion at a later date. But what prevents a group of individuals from attending the Beach Coma, going out to dinner, and singing, and playing their guitar?
And you've been doing this, you've been doing this for the, you've granted the ability to do this, correct? For the last number of weeks.
All right.
You've granted the ability to do.
Now, now, listen, okay? With no, with, it is with remorse, but we're going to move on. Greg, you've been provided the avenue to work with Sam to come to some solution, and I know it's emotional, but do me a favor on this one, and I can tell from the look in your eyes, you know who you are right now. Sam has offered to help you move forward this. Do me a favor, let's go all the way on this. I mean, the board's going to support you, Sam's trying to support you, but let's see what we can do. Because, and it's not, it's just because of certain events, then other events got triggered, it's actually, the scrutiny is above Sam now. So work with Sam to seek relief, or go to the next step, so that we can all get on the Beach Coma and feel good about it. Because I'm not happy about what's happened either, but that's the way real life is. So do me a favor, and let's move on, we have more to do tonight. Okay, one more thing from Damon.
Yeah, I think the selectmen do want to support the Beach Comer, that's why we approved the last license. And to your point about people singing, I think technically, anytime in a restaurant where there is alcohol and food served, and you sing Happy Birthday, you technically would become a nightclub. And you could be reported for it. We've unfortunately crossed that line in a very public way here, and we're trying to find our way back to make it so that the Beach Comer can do what they've been doing, and what we want them to continue to do.
And I, but. The only thing is, I think Damon, they'd have to do it from four to seven every Sunday night. All right.
Quick question before you move on.
Go ahead, Sam.
There was an approved motion for the one-night amplified with approval from?
Right, contingent upon approval. From, from police and fire. All right, under new business. Sam, stay put, go ahead, keep the ear open.
See you, good.
We'll let it quiet down for a sec, folks. I'm going to need Sam when we go forward on these licenses. Well, I need Sam, too, to make sure that the rest of the liquor licenses have the same.
What, did the sign itself read?
Night, night come, Beach Coma nightclub coming. But ask Greg, so you know what exactly it said. Oh, I guess you got a picture.
Just want to thank you.
Sam, stay for a second. We're heading into the next item of new business, and it is a one-day liquor license at, with the Mercury Brewing Company for a function on Spinaya Farm, on October 11th, 2014, from 1:00 AM to 4:00 PM. 11:00 PM, excuse me. Have they done everything that supposedly needs to be done?
And again, I would ask the same process be followed, is that we, tonight at least, until we get our forms and get our process in place ahead of time, if, if selectmen are so inclined to prove it, with the condition that with building, fire, and, and police approvals were okay. So that way, we can make sure, you know, if there's anything like tents on site, I can take care of, traffic controls, police and fire.
So tents trigger something else, too?
What's that?
Tents trigger something else, too?
Yeah, and that's what, most of the forms will have, on any of these events, will have, you know, myself and the two chiefs sign off as far as public safety goes, and then if there's anything else applicable, we'll have that as a sign off as well. But in the meantime, just to have them take a quick trip by, describe to each of us what, what the event is, you know, what type of capacity they're going to, you know, have a function in. We can either sign off as is, or if there's conditions that we may need to have them abide by, we can, can make notation on that.
Okay, so for my board, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Stephanie Watson, the Mercury Brewing at the Spencer Pierce Little Farm, we need a motion conditioned the same way the motion was conditioned for the event at the.
I move that we approve the license, provided that we have written approval from police, fire, and building inspector.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Another one-day liquor license, Ipswich Ale, for a function again at Spencer Pierce Little Farm, on Saturday, September 20th, 2014, from 12:00 to 6:00 PM. I'd entertain a motion with the same conditions.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Another one-day liquor license for the Colby Farm Tiger Lilies on 50 Scarlet Road, it's September 18th and 19th. Let me just double-check that. Yep, 18th and 19th, 2014, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. That would be, meet an approval with the same conditions.
Moved with the same conditions applying.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five-day liquor license for the Cat in the Cradle for Byfield Community Arts Center, it's going to be for 9:27, 10:04, 10:18, 11:15, 12:13, and it should require the same conditions.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so they would probably have to redesign their application and come back to us with fire and police.
And Sam.
Right? And if there's tents involved, they're going to have to clear that with you, too?
Where these are coming up so frequently, what we'll try and do is, prior to next selectmen's meeting, have, have some new form work, so that it kind of streamlines things. So when folks get here, it's all signed off, all you guys have to look to see if it's there, and then address any concerns you might have and move them on.
So there's going to. Huh?
And the form that you currently used is one that you approved, you definitely A, B, C, C.
Mean in the 11th?
The one on September 18th and 19th, and the one on September 21st.
But they can still talk to the fire chief and all of that. They just won't have the new form.
Right.
Yeah.
And again, that can be just through either informal discussions, or quick notation, email, that type of thing, just so we have, have our bases covered.
I think liability-wise, we need something in writing from everybody.
Most towns do, we're just, you know, we're, we're catching up. You know, we're, we're a young town at, you know, 300, 300 years.
All right. So that being said, Kathy, can you send notices to these people? Okay, moving on. Thanks, Sam.
Thank you.
Good job, Sam, not easy. Dina.
I'm the only guy in the pocket, Mike.
Dina wants to speak to us about a project that includes the stadium.
Thank you. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Dina Sullivan, and I'm a member of the Triton Regional School District. With me tonight is also the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and Robin Williams, who's also a fellow committee member. I will be brief. What I wanted to draw your attention to, you were informed of a meeting that we're having September 17th, and it is about, I'm going to give you a broad overview of what we've done with the stadium so far, but that meeting on the 17th is very important, because we will give you further detail, answer any questions that you might have. We could answer questions tonight if you'd like, but we'd really like to have the selectmen and FinCom there to be involved in this process. If you have been to the stadium in the last several years, you know that we need to revitalize that stadium. The bleachers are unsafe, as is the track. Through TEF and many very dedicated, hard-working volunteers, we've tried to raise money, but we've fallen short, and it's getting to the point where those safety issues are taking priority, and we are going to need to talk to the towns about how we move forward with this. We, at the last school committee presentat, or last school committee meeting, we had a presentation by Gala and Associates, who we've been working with to look at the stadium and what we could do to revitalize it, and that's some of the information we would share with you on the 17th. But in brief, this would incorporate redoing the track, the bleachers, which are in sore need of repair, and amenities building, all kinds of things like that. We have a shortened timeline, hopefully, if we can get this all done with, with help from the, our member towns, we would be playing on that field next September. But my main point is, please come to that meeting on the 17th, next Wednesday night, and bring FinCom with you, and we need to have a serious discussion about what we're doing. If you have any questions tonight that you'd like us to answer, or we'll see you on the 17th.
Any questions, Damon?
No, currently.
Dina, what, what's the scope of the project? I mean, is it going to go to artificial turf? I mean, where are we going?
The, the plan right now is still an artificial turf surface. The plan right now is still an artificial turf surface. Instead of four lanes on the track, it would be six. Like I said, we would have to redo the bleachers, an amenities building, we'd have to do, you know, there are all kinds of other issues that redoing that stadium would involve, such as, you know, facilities and ways to get around that. Brian could probably address that better than I can, but all that information would be shared on the 17th unless you want... Brian, do you want to come address some of that?
Brian, you know what? It'd be kind of nice, I mean, just for the sake of, I mean, our capital planning committee kind of projects out what we need to do, and this might be a heads up. I mean, we've got a lot of issues facing us, and, you know, you're obviously aware of the police station and the conditions that we need to address, and what are some of the other things, Tracy, there's quite a bit on our plate, right? I mean, repairs to the library and round school and, you know, and fire truck, and, I mean, public safety, public safety is starting to really suffer now, and we always balance those things. So this could be a tough year for us, but give us an idea of where we're going so we know. It'll be on TV a little, and we'll give a little update for people that are listening.
Absolutely, thank you. So I'm Brian Forget, the Assistant Superintendent, I'm sorry, at Triton. We have been working on this project for three-plus years. The total project with an amenities building, which is necessary because of the required fixtures for restrooms, we wouldn't be in code to not put restrooms in a revised stadium. The bleachers currently, as to quote Bill Seymour, don't meet any codes that you have on the books. The, as Dina said, it's a, it would be a six-lane track with an eight-lane straight. It would widen the field of play, removing the visitor bleachers, and putting a 1,500-seat grandstand on the existing home side. There would be rear-entry bleachers. With that increased width, we would stay within the existing footprint of the existing stadium. However, with that increased width, it would be regulation MIAA soccer, lacrosse, field hockey, and football. The total, again, these are preliminary numbers, are in the vicinity of $3 million. That's including the building, the entirety of the track, bleachers, and the turf. That also includes an upgrade and retrofit of all the lighting, which is more energy-efficient as well as more directional in regards to the bleeding light out into the environment. Part of the discussion has been, I know this was raised in June at a district communications committee meeting, and again, the hope is to get everyone, all three towns around the table again, is as a revenue-generating opportunity. This certainly would be opportunity for revenue generated from a synthetic field of this nature. It's lit. The beauty of a synthetic field is that there's no resting period. For a natural turf field, you can play and then you have to rest it. This, I mean, I forget the number of hours, I remember what Bill said, but it's, you could, this could be played on 12 hours a day for 10 years. So that's one of the benefits of the synthetic turf field. Obviously, there's a decision that has to be made, but the plan at this point that we've had with the discussions with the committee, there is a $525,000 donation from the Institution for Savings. There is another roughly $150,000, 100 to 150,000 raised through TEF, Triton Education Foundation. That was a group that took this on for the past two years and tried to go out and get private donations. So they did get some, a lot of sweat equity, but no large donations were received outside that threshold, and there is approximately $165,000 in gate receipts that we have not used because we knew all along we have to address at some point the bleachers and the track. We, the students have not run, our student athletes have not run on that track in a competition since 2011 because it's been deemed unsafe. So with this new stadium, we could host MIAA events, we could host band competitions, and then again, that outside revenue source. The discussion we've had so far would be that outside this initial investment, revenues generated from the rental and any gate receipts, but specifically rental, would be put back towards replenishment. The track surface has to be addressed about every seven years to the tune of 40,000 to 50,000, and then the carpet, the actual grass gets replaced in the stadium every 12 to 14 years, and according to the engineers, they're thinking that's gonna push more towards the 14, 15 years, to the tune of about 400,000. Every other piece of that, that investment really is for life, the, all of the substructure. So the thought would be, any revenues generated would go into a revolving account that would allow for those replacements over the cycle. That way, the initial investments from the towns, we wouldn't be coming back to you in five, 10 years for any replacement because the facility would sustain itself. Again, with that roughly $3 million backing off those other revenues, we're looking at, working with First Southwest, who we've used for all our bonding, they don't believe there's really enough of a market for a 20-year bond. Looking at two, two and a quarter, you would have to be a much larger total to really get an attractive rate on a 20-year bond. So looking at a 15-year bond, we're in the mid-twos. So the payments would be in the 60s for each town, 60,000, call it 60 to 70, again, we're talking very general numbers right now, per year for 15 years. Discussions with other boards of selectmen, the question was, would it be divided equally by three? Would it be on enrollment? And that's obviously all discussions that we want to have with the committee and with all three towns sitting around the table, hearing and participating in the same discussion. So I'm not sure if there's other things I didn't address, but certainly happy to answer questions.
Since we were just discussing liability in the last discussion, if the bleachers are as unsafe as they are and are currently being used, are the three towns exposed to huge liability or Triton itself, or where, you know, could Sam condemn them at this point? You know, what is that situation?
I would say Sam, could Sam condemn them? I would leave Sam to make that statement, but they are certainly, if you know the bleachers, new bleachers are completely contained, so you can't fall through them. These are the old-fashioned wooden seats and wooden steps. They, we have replaced boards so that Sam can approve them each year, so replace boards here and there. They are not repairable, cost-effectively, they're not repairable at this point. We're doing the onesie-twosie, replacing the boards as they become splintering. But is there a liability? Absolutely. Are the towns directly liable? No, but because the district is the entity and you fund the district, and we are the same school district, then there is absolutely a liability. Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead, Chuck.
I have a flyer here from last year's, you know, Team Triton building a stadium, building a community here, and it does mention the $525,000 from the Institution for Savings. It says it was two and a half million total construction cost. The last paragraph is what I find interesting. "The goal is to raise all the funds from private tax-deductible donations or sponsorships, not through taxes or funding from the Triton towns." Why have you deviated from that initial course?
The Triton Education Foundation, as we said, worked for two years. They tried. They did not gain the traction that they thought. After spending a good deal, over two years working at this, the board of the Triton Education Foundation has decided that they're not equipped to raise the funds privately. So they, they made a decision that they weren't capable of doing that, and therefore kind of handed it back to the district. We then took that decision, again, that was a discussion that happened in June with the district communications committee, and brought it to the towns to say, this is the project. The difference in the pricing is the amenities building. That was, we were hoping we could bypass the code. We're now learning that there's really no way around that.
Okay.
So that is the difference. The intention was, early on, the request from the Institution for Savings and their initial donation was to make it as, make it private, that gets away from prevailing wage, and some things have changed. It will now, it has to be prevailing wage. It's a public property, so that is the reason for the change.
Can I just...
Absolutely.
Chuck, I just want to tell you, I've been involved with this from the beginning, and we, when we were first looking at this, we had meetings with other communities. In fact, Gloucester was one of them, and they told us from the start that we were foolish to try and do it privately because they had tried, and they were in the same boat that we find ourselves in now. And that is, everybody with the best intentions, I mean, people came out to support our fundraisers, but we could not get the big donors because they wanted to see that progress was being made, but we couldn't make progress without having funding. So it was a vicious circle. So we, with the change in the board at TEF, and like Brian said, that they feel like this is not something that they can do or do well, and want to focus their goals more on more, on other matters in the district. We couldn't do this anymore. I mean, it just, it isn't feasible. The, our teams, our students deserve better than this. We have made a lot of changes in Triton within even the sports program. Our teams are competitive, and it's just a shame that we can't have track meets at our own stadium because it's too unsafe. So we've tried, we tried everything.
My argument here is, as Jeff had said earlier, about the override is gonna be very, very busy for us this year. We may even have to have 250 on it just to pay the schools the regular thing. We have a police department downstairs that's so bad, we've gotta fumigate it. We've had to have moved them out twice this week already. Now, that is a serious issue that needs addressing.
Understood.
And the more we ask for, the less we're gonna get voted for. That's my only point here, okay?
Okay, I...
So, not, at the risk of being argumentative here, I think of override as gonna be very, very busy here.
Well, I'm just trying to explain what has changed since that flyer. All we're asking at this point is that you come to the meeting on the 17th, listen to a more informed and more discussion-oriented meeting.
Library?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
With the other two towns as well, because it will affect all three towns.
We'll be there.
Great, thank you.
Thank you much.
Thanks, Brian. Thanks, Dina. Moving on. Anyone else? Any discussion in the audience before I move on? All right, moving on. Is Alan Daly here tonight? Would you like to come up?
I too will be brief. I'm gonna read a couple of statements just so that I can be succinct. I wanted to thank you all for allowing me to address the group again. I felt it was important that I had the opportunity to circle back with an update on where things stood since I last raised some concerns in August regarding some of the issues on Plum Island. I am very pleased to report that the issue of trash was addressed immediately by the Plum Island Foundation. They increased pickup to twice weekly through the end of September, which has completely solved the problem for the moment. I also spoke with members of the Board of Health, both Deborah and Virginia, regarding my concerns, and they and Kathleen have helped me identify the right people to address a few of the other concerns that were raised. Sam Jocelyn, the building inspector, has seen to fixing the broken glass in the beach entranceway sign, as well as the jagged pole that was reaching out. He will be working to post meaningful and attractive notices in the glass cabinets. I also got a lengthy note from Tim Leonard with his thoughts and explanation regarding some of the downed fences and signage at the beach entrance. Chief Riley took time to speak with me at length while I traveled on business, actually in another time zone, to cover some of the ideas that I had raised and others had come up with for dealing with some of the heavier volume of beach visitors that we had seen, the lack of resources, and shared some of his experience as chief for the last several years. We exchanged some thoughts on that and look forward to working together. He has pledged to do that with me and with anyone else that's interested in a committee situation. Kathleen has steered me in all the right directions, and Tracy has offered as well to work as a liaison for the Board of Health, the police, and the Plum Island Foundation. And to that end, I just wanted to report that the foundation has asked me to join as a board member, and I met with them this afternoon. We collectively hope to work with town officials to help solve for the unique issues raised in a beach community and environment with heavy visitation. We're delighted that we're seeing it, but we are very interested in solving for any of the issues that that brings with it. We're very interested in a public and private collaboration, something akin to the MRBA model, which I understand is the successful partnership of a number of entities. Our hope is that we will continue to address health, safety, and beautification of Plum Island through a collaborative, sustainable management program, and we look forward to working together. So I really just wanted to report some good news and thank everyone who's helped.
Alan, thanks for your work because it could have been kind of contentious in the beginning, and you really did a nice job bringing it all in, and it seems to be working pretty well. So thanks for your job.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, appreciate it. Chief, you're gonna probably get mad at me, I think. Is Keith Eddings here?
No, you have a note.
I know that. I just, I have a note. He has been asked not to attend tonight's meeting, so he's not here.
Okay.
But I enjoyed you being here.
I enjoyed being here. I'm going to go home.
Sorry, Chief.
What's wrong?
So, now, in our packet, another item. Susan, yes?
How much longer are you on the agenda? We just have to balance that.
Oh, we're gonna move. Boom. I'll get it going. We need to sign a form for the Plum Island Grill for their liquor license, right?
The pledge of their license.
Yep, so that's something that we do every time it comes up. Cath?
This is actually a new application to A-B-C-C to allow me to pledge their license.
I'm confused.
I think pledging it to a bank or to secure funding.
Tracy, do you know anything about this?
No.
That's what a pledge of a license is.
Huh.
Yeah, not sure, bank.
All right, so that's any information you've got there?
No, this is their whole file.
Okay.
File that has to go to A-B-C-C, you just have to... It's at the front page.
I mean, that sounds like something I think we can do. You guys all right with that? So...
Absolutely.
All right, minutes. Everyone was here, I think?
Can I have a motion on that?
Okay, okay. Motion to accept the signing for the licensing pledge from the Plum Island Grill.
So moved. Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes. We were all here. Did you guys get a chance to read them?
Subtle is read.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Communications, any? Anyone do anything? That's it. Meeting updates? Oh, communication? A meeting update. Doesn't matter.
Tracy, did you already do those two appointments?
Yeah, I have two appointments. One is for the Municipal Building Committee. Michael Doyle has asked to serve, has come forward, and who was the other one? Kathy? Do you have them right here?
The Personnel Board, the one that...
Oh, Evangeline Sutter for the Personnel Board. She served the unexpired term of someone else previously, but she would like to, her term, her new term would start July 1st, 2014, and end June 30th, 2016.
So what would the motion be for the board to accept? What? What do we got right in front of me?
Yeah, it should be right there.
Okay. We'll make a motion to this one first.
I make a motion to approve Evangeline Sutter as the, to the Personnel Board.
Second motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to approve Michael Doyle, or, yeah, to approve Michael Doyle as a member of the Municipal Building Committee.
Second motion.
Where's Michael from?
Right here.
Morgan Ave.
Morgan Ave. I know we were trying to get more representation from...
He's here.
Different areas, which is the only reason I ask.
Well, we put out an appeal to get more people involved in it.
Yep.
And thank you for doing that.
Thanks, Mike.
Have we voted yet?
We're gonna make it right now. That was discussion, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, so we'll sign those. That was under meeting updates. Executive session, none. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
To adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, so we'll sign those. That was under meeting updates. Executive session, none. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
To adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.